We have a quorum and the agenda was properly posted. Will you pledge allegiance now?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item four is public appearances, public's opportunity to speak on any subject that's not specific agenda item.
I think we're gonna stop for a second. This gentleman, he's the guy that came last time.
Oh.
From the forest. So I'll walk by.
Okay.
What's that?
Yeah, same.
Okay.
Now's the time to turn the form in.
Yeah. Is it Steve?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak on a subject that's not specific agenda item?
Uh, yes, sir.
Do you have your form that's back there to just have your full name and everything on it?
Maybe he can speak and then fill that out. That doesn't, it's a couple of things.
Yes, please. And then you're up. Thank you. And just a reminder, all speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board, commissioner and committee. That's just the general rule guideline for us. So.
Oh, I don't need three minutes or I just, I guess apparently.
That's fine.
Oh, per state statute, I would like to request a time to address the village board in closed session.
Oh.
Concerning the HR issue per Wisconsin state statute. Because I believe that has to be discussed in closed session.
It's not a position that the village has any authority over.
This is regarding the EMS.
Stephen stopped at the top with me and I asked him. I asked him to put in writing what his issue is, never did. Both of them have put him in contact with Chris Hampton and the attorney at Deer Grove EMS.
I did, I did attempt to contact attorney, I believe it's attorney Barker.
Dan Barker.
Yes. I was not able to get ahold of him, sir. I left several messages, so.
This isn't, there's nothing we can do. There's something he has to address with Deer Grove EMS.
Can you send in Dan's email?
He hasn't.
Or he hasn't. Do you have his?
I called him. I don't have his email. Would I be able to just email you, sir, and then get it?
Sure.
Yep.
Would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Is that it then? Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yep. All right. Moving on to item five, then discuss and consider the minutes from our regular meeting on May 6th. The additions, corrections, updates.
I move to approve.
And a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Any further discussion? Have we heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Next, we have a presentation for Cheryl Whitty, Whitty Wiki, if I'm pronouncing it right. Or butchering it well, from the executive director of Safe Communities, Madison Dane Cowan. So please either come and have a seat or elect or however you choose.
Great. Thank you. I really want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you this evening. We're celebrating our first 20 years as a coalition of partners that are working together to address Dane County's top causes of injury. And so I wanted to do a couple of things. One, just to brief you on things that we've already been doing together for, for a number of years. And also to just sort of put you in the picture of, I think, some exciting collaborations that I would invite all of us to be more involved in, if you're interested. So I gave you a bit of information there. One is our strategy at a glance. So this is Dane County's top cause of injury as determined by public health. And those are drug overdose. So the opioid epidemic that you've probably been hearing a fair bit about. We are collaborative that work to address that. And so some of the work that we're doing includes the Med Drop project. That's a project of partners across Dane County. We have 14 sites now. So everybody in Dane County is just minutes from a Med Drop location. We know that about 75% of new opioid users get medications from somebody that they know with or without asking. So promoting safe disposal and storage of medications is, is an evidence-based practice that we, that we promote. We also are the first community in the country to adopt the recovery coach model. So recovery coaches are people who have lived experience with, with opioid addiction and they're in recovery. And then they've gone through training, basically to be able to help other people who are in addiction to find recovery. So folks are going, are our recovery coaches, and we have seven, go to all the emergency rooms now. We just came on board at Mariter. So all the emergency departments in Dane County have recovery coaches provided by Safe Communities available. So if someone comes in and is treated for an overdose, they can call a recovery coach. And the recovery coach comes and, and really works with them to get into treatment. We have a 90% success rate in terms of getting people into recovery. You know, some, some of them don't stay, but at least they get to a treatment intake. And so we're seeing, you know, a lot of improvement there. So that's one of our projects as well. We have a partnership with all the healthcare organizations in Dane County to work on reducing, changing prescribing practices. We know that when opioid prescribing went up, we also saw an increase in overdose and addiction. So not to deny people from pain medication, but how can you make sure that you're getting the right sort of dosage and, and opportunities to dispose of meds if they need to. So that's a, that's been a really successful partnership. And then, of course, we work with all the EMS and police departments to promote the dissemination of naloxone, which has been another way that we've saved a lot of lives. We also work to prevent Elder Falls. That's our number one cause of injury hospitalization in Dane County. I was just talking with, with the chief about the project or the class that was held here in Cottage Grove. So we are, we do have a presence here in Cottage Grove. Actually, our coordinator is from the village, Ashley Hillman. And so we work with senior centers and folks throughout the county to offer stepping on, which has been shown to reduce falls among older adults by 30%. So it's a really powerful intervention. We also have more African Americans participating in those classes than any other community in the, in the state. So we're excited about our partnerships there. Traffic crashes, maybe you're familiar with our slowdown yard signs. That's a Safe Communities initiative. We also run the Alive at 25 classes. So that if a young person has a GDL violation or some sort of a, you know, traffic violation, they can be referred to the court to a Alive at 25 class that's taught by retired deputies. And again, it's been shown to, to improve young drivers' prospects, which is a very important project. And finally, suicide prevention is another area we work in. We have a zero suicide initiative where we mobilize all of the healthcare organizations to reduce access to lethal means. And one project that we're very excited about is our gun shop project. So we partner with gun shops in Dane County, including one in Deerfield, to store people's guns when they're, when they're at risk of suicide. So it's, it's basically an opportunity for healthcare to say, hey, we've got a place where you can take your gun. We want you to get your guns out of the house right now because you're, you're at risk. And take it to a gun shop. They can store it to you until, for you until you're, you know, you're in a good place to have it back. So again, we're the only place in the country that's doing that. That's our partnership with gun shops. We also have a QPR training, question for straight refer, which is a, a course for anybody, everybody who wants to know how to, how to respond to somebody who may be having a suicidal crisis. So I just wanted to give you sort of an overview of those projects. And also you'll, you'll be able to see through our 20-year sort of report here, a number of the different projects and outcomes. So we've collected over 18 tons of medications through Med Drop. We've seen a 78% increase in yield of pedestrian rates at crossings with the, with our pedestrian flags. We've had about now 1,000 young drivers complete the Alive at 25 class. And 90% of folks, as I mentioned, who are treated for an overdose are matched with a recovery coach and connected treatment. So these are just some of the projects we're engaged in and wanted to thank the chief and the senior, senior services providers for Cottage Grove for their partnership. And just to sort of open it up for any questions or suggestions that you might have about how we can work to.
Do you have any data specific to residents in Cottage Grove that use your services?
We know, for example, that the stepping on class, we, we had about 15 people participate in that course just within the last year. Otherwise, some of our, some of our data is pretty general. For example, we don't know how many or where people come from necessarily if they leave medications in a Med Drop box. But we've had regular participation in terms of the slowdown yard sign campaign, for example, and that kind of work. And we can, we can track to a certain extent the recovery coaching. So if you're interested in that information, you can work on getting that to you. And then a new, a new part of the recovery coaching is that first responders can refer directly to our recovery coaches. So if, if somebody from Deer Grove or from the village police department encounters someone who they think could benefit from a recovery coach, rather than that person having to go to the emergency room, you can refer directly. And we can get you cards to be able to refer people directly to recovery coaches.
Yeah. If you could do that, that'd be great.
Do you have any, like, what, what can we do on our end? Toolkits or media guides or some way to increase awareness of services like this?
Thanks for asking. I think one, one thing we'd really like to do is, is connect with you through social media. We have a pretty, pretty active social media, you know, sort of effort campaigns. So we can get information to you and have it linked directly to yours, your sites and have, you know, sort of reciprocal arrangement there. We also work with Fact TV in Fitchburg. They produce regular segments that I understand through cable access can be, they're, they're happy to share all that information. So we've done sessions on pregnancy to recovery, which is our program for pregnant women and recovery coaching. Need to recovery, you know, Suicide Gun Shop Project, those kinds of things. And we can, we can connect with, with you guys. We could definitely work back and forth and get that information out to you.
And where can you receive your funding?
We get about 50%, now about 60% of our funding from government entities. We have CDC grants, so Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And SAMSA, which is the Substance Abuse Mental Health Administration, funding directly from the state. And then we get funding from Dane County and municipalities. So actually, if, if there's interest, we're, we're never going to be a pay-to-play sort of organization. So we will partner with everybody who's interested. But if you'd like to become sort of a paying formal member of Safe Communities, we have a membership campaign. We have members that are contributing, municipal members contributing anything from, you know, 500 to, you know, on up. And again, that's just a way for us to keep the doors open. It's not a, not a requirement or anything. But increasingly, we are, because our grants are dicey, you know, you never know when grants are going to come and go. It's helpful to have that sort of sustaining support.
Cheryl carries a lot of credibility too because she lives in my grandmother's little house. There's a lot of, a lot of history, you know.
Good people live in that house.
Absolutely.
You've traveled everywhere lately.
I know. I know.
And also, if anybody in the audience is interested, we have reports here. Welcome to help us out.
I think we can, anyways, make some connections certainly through social media. We can have further discussion as a board and how we do that, maybe at committee level. I know that Elder Falls, for instance, there's some work that's been done from our paramedics and our EMS group have done that. And certainly chief here and his officers, Evan Narcan, have saved a number of folks unfortunately that have overdosed already. And hopefully maybe we can do a referral in those cases to those coaches.
I know that Ashley has met with the, with the Deer Grove EMS about, about connecting more directly with the community paramedics and falls prevention. So I think there's also really great opportunities.
Do you have a sense of, do you track referral sources for the Alive at 25 program?
We do.
Do you know how, does Cottage Grove send folks?
I would have to go back and check. We would love to, to have more referrals. So if there's a way, I mean, it's just, it's a powerful program. Sometimes, I think sometimes municipal court judges have concerns that folks aren't necessarily going to, you know, see, get the full impacts of the, of the court's rulings if they go through an Alive at 25 class. But I guess we're not, we're not really seeing that.
And it's for specifically teen drivers?
Up to 25.
Okay.
And the reason for 25 is because that's, you know, a top cause of death for young people that age. If we can get them past 25, that's a good thing as far as traffic crashes, for instance.
We discussed it at peer court. Sierra Grove, who is from Briar Patch, had mentioned, she brought up an example of somebody that had gotten themselves in trouble at McFarland where they have Alive at 25. And it sounded like a really cool program. It sounded really neat. But I don't think we've, I could be incorrect, but I'm pretty certain we have not sent anybody from peer court there.
I wonder if it would be an opportunity for, so we send our peer court kids and those are just kids that are still in high school. And then I think there's a gap, obviously, between high school and age 25. That I, I wonder if our municipal judge knows about Alive at 25.
Well, he does because he was part of our, our discussion that night.
Okay. And so he could refer to that program even now that we don't have to have the course in Cottage Grove, for example. And is there a cost to the participants?
Yeah, there is a, there is a cost. It's $75 to go to the class. It's a four-hour course.
And what's the benefit of going besides getting more knowledge?
Well, sometimes I think they, they'll reduce the points. The judges will reduce the points. It's kind of up to the judge how they want, how they want to handle it.
I think there's a class now, I happen to, unfortunately, have to come to municipal court a couple of times and listen to the traffic citations. And there's a class specifically for people who don't stop at stop signs, right, chief?
Yeah, it's required.
It's a required class, if you will, through the stop sign. So it feels like.
She's officially known as California Stop.
Is that what? It just seems like this could be a.
Speaking from experience, Lee?
No. Well, actually, Dan had sent over some information. And I was talking to a couple of our municipal attorneys. I didn't even have heard of it. And there's a whole series of violations now that, they haven't been criminalized, but now at least you have to go to the, go to their class to kind of emphasize what's the issue.
It seems like that's a good, a smart thing to have besides if we're going to emphasize that we have a stop sign.
It's a good class. It used to be more sort of driver's ed, you know, sort of straightforward kind of stuff. Now they really, they've revised the curriculum, so it's much more decision-making skills and refusal skills. Like, so if you're in a car with a bunch of, you know, friends who are not using the best judgment, how do you extract yourself from that situation? And more role-playing and interactive. And Randy Weesinger and Lori Weesinger from, they're retired from the Dane County Sheriff's Office teach the course. And they're really fantastic instructors.
And you do other outreach about traffic safety also? Was I reading about some other like roundabout?
Yeah. Yeah. So there's, there's information on our website about safely navigating roundabouts, which I know is a challenge for folks. And then we have, we also created the, the Ped Flag project. So if you're interested in, in Ped Flag locations, that's something we can talk about. We have something called Artful Crossings where we, we featured local artists on the pedestrian flag holders. And that's been popular. And that, we had actually a NHTSA, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, grant to pilot that project some years ago. And so we did, we did pre and post tests and found that that little flag actually really makes a difference in terms of yield of pedestrian rates. It's, it's cheaper than a full-on flasher, but with not much difference.
So if I wanted a yard sign to slow down, where would I, where would I get that?
Well, I would make sure that the chief has them at his location and then we, we try to get them out through the police, the local police department.
Do you have a whole staff?
We have, we get them every spring, so we should have some at the police department.
And this is really an example of Safe Communities. So we're not about building a staff empire. We have a very small staff. It's really about getting resources to local partners so they can get them out. And that's, you know, there's an infrastructure out there. There's great people doing great work. Let's just put tools in their hands so they can get it done.
How many of those do you give out each year?
We've had a partnership with American Family. I would say, you know, sort of on order of 1,000 a year. Something like that. I don't know actually how many are sitting in police departments, but that's how many are, are going out. And then, and then again, through social media, we would say, you know, here's a post that you can put out, you know, Cottage Grove PD if you want to promote it. That's the kind of information we try to give out.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
All right. Item seven then is unfinished business. Discuss the process for filling in vacant village charge seat position. Item was tabled from May 6th, so we certainly need a motion to.
I'll make a motion to take it off the table. Second.
Motion second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. It is now off the table.
Well, I'd like to, because I, I don't want to leave the position open. Oh, and I don't think we've had anybody stepping forward other than John Russell. I'm gonna, I would like to nominate John Russell.
Okay, we have a motion there. Nominate John Russell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any discussion then? No discussion. All right. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
Aye.
I don't think we have any exceptions. And motion carries. John's, John's not here tonight, so.
No, he had a softball thing, I think, tonight.
All right. Moving on to item 7B, discuss and consider proposed amendments 325 regarding zoning related to 2017 Wisconsin Act 67 and 2017 Wisconsin 243. Again, this was tabled from the May 6th meeting. So we need a motion to remove it back off the table.
I'll make a motion to put it back on the table.
Okay.
I'll second.
I am going to ask that you re-table it since I was otherwise engaged last week. I didn't really have any time to look into this, but I am going to be, I have called the legislative reference bureau and I plan to meet with one of their staff attorneys. And so I can get the information that you were looking for. So if we could table it, I would appreciate it.
So we should probably not take it off the table then? Yeah.
No, you have, you have to take it off the table to talk about it. Because if you just leave it on the table, then it dies. So we've taken it off the table. Now I'm going to ask you to put it back on.
Do you, can you cite back to us what it is that we're instructed to do?
It's the language about protest petitions and it's how that can be tweaked or changed in any way. Were, I'm interested to find out if there were other iterations of it that were discussed and not pursued. And I'd also like to talk with other municipal attorneys in, that I know, and just find out if they've had any discussions in their municipalities. I tried down in Texas and they said, well, land belongs to land. So. So anyway, I just didn't really, you know, I just didn't get it done. But I will next time.
Specifically with language to village residents and?
Well, what I'd like to do, Jeff, is really give, give you a.
All the options.
Options. And just say, okay, here's what it says now. Here's, and this is what the carryover is. These are ways that you could consider changing it. And I, I don't want to make a substantial change that simply opens the village up to somebody saying, well, you can't do that. Or, you know, that's not enforceable. So I'm, I'd like to have a good, sound basis for making the changes that I think that the board was interested in doing.
All right. Sounds good. I'll motion the table. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
We gotta, we gotta vote on the un-tableing.
All right.
Oh, so I'm, I'm sorry.
So there's a motion, a second, to take it off the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor then?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Now, Jeff.
Make a motion to table it till the next meeting.
Okay. Motion is second to table again. Item B, 6B. Any further discussion for that? All those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstain?
Jeff, that was your direction, right? I mean, there wasn't any other.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we had a clear view on what you, what we asked you to do and it was still the case, so.
Yep.
All right. Moving on down to item eight, new business. First one up is discuss and consider requests from Cottage Grove Fire Department for accommodations for 2019 Fireman's Festival. Eric is here.
I'm here.
To give us the lowdown.
Lowdown? We're going to do festival again this year, 88th year. Starts Thursday, June 13th, goes through Sunday, the 16th. Couple of the highlights for this year. Music in the Grove will be down there on Thursday. Gin, Chocolate and Bottle Rockets is the, the band playing. We've had them before. They have pretty good turnout. Friday, we've got Pacific Coast Highway playing in the Big Tent. That'll start at 8:00. Friday, also, up in the smaller tent, we've got, it's called Gunpowder and Shot. They play from 7:00 to 10:00. Carnival, we have brand-new Carnival this year. We have Wensels Carnival. They are out of Milwaukee area, I believe. So doing a new allegiance. And Wensel, who runs Wensels, has a zero violation on her Carnival for the past five years. So that's why we made the big change to go away from who we currently had that we had for, oh, 40 years or so. I remember when I was a little kid going down there, same Carnival company. So we've changed that up. Brand-new Carnival, safer rides, better-looking everything.
Yeah, I think they had the same rides for when you were a kid.
Yeah, they were. Yeah. You know, JB Will goes, we're well. Saturday, parade starts at 11:30. School heads south. It'll end kind of just a little past 18:55. We're not going to go up by Aster like we have in years past. That was requested by the BFW color guard. Apparently by the time they hit 18:55, they're kind of tired. So. So we're just going to let it go straight. Then the other big thing is Saturday, we're doing a beanbag cornhole tournament, whatever you guys are active there is. That'll go from 1:00 to 6:00 Saturday night. Madison County playing in the Big Tent. And Charlie Wiggins will play in the smaller tent. We got home talent baseball Friday night, Sunday. Oh, I can't forget, the great pancake breakfast Sunday morning by Lions Club.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
That's it in a nutshell. I got, I submitted my letter to keep the park open since the Carnival hopes of we living down there that week. So.
How many entrants do you have for the parade? It's usually a pretty long parade, right?
We try to cap it at 100. But if we get more than 100, we'll just keep adding.
How many do you have? Do you not?
I have no idea. I'm not in charge of the, the.
I'm in charge of the overall thing. I sub, I, that's a whole different committee.
I subcontract that out. I just say, what do you need? Okay. And usually it's like up about 100 or so and it's pretty, and we get stuff, obviously we get a lot of Cottage Grove stuff, but we get some Minoan and McFarlane. And usually it's like about a hundred or so and it's pretty mu, and we get stuff, obviously we get a lot of Cottage Grove stuff, but we get some Minoan, McLaren, Deerfield. We get, you know, a couple of different parties to make them around now, so.
Any questions for Eric?
Oh, shoot, the other thing, uh, Saturday morning, sorry. Uh, the Hot Traut Run. Sorry, Wes. Kids run, five K and half marathon. And those are the same, we altered the half marathon route a little bit this year to kind of follow along the five K route. One that kind of helps cut down on volunteers and then also water stations and stuff like that, so. But you guys should have that map, so. Hey, if you want to run, come on out and run. Paul is actually gonna run in the middle, so that'll be interesting.
Are you still looking for volunteers?
We are always looking for volunteers or runners. If you feel like it.
I'm volunteering.
Oh. Yeah, so that's it. That's it in a nutshell.
Any questions for Eric?
So what requests are we considering? Just the course?
Nothing, actually. I've just, we've always come before you to present and if you have questions, you can get the answers directly from me.
Need to approve anything then?
No, we don't. We, there's really no approvals or anything. It's just simply that in the, I don't know, five or six years ago, there were some questions, well, why was it here? Why is it there? And they've always come to the, um, to the board and explained what's being planned and, you know, um, generally the board's been very supportive of that. It hasn't been a couple of years where they've asked questions, but.
Well, it was a couple of years ago, we had it on as a discuss or presentation item and then the, the board asked.
What do we approve it?
Asked them to come, no, they had to come back to get approval.
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right, yeah.
So that's why it's on here. You guys just tell me to do it. I just do it.
I appreciate that.
It's like my way. Go do this, okay?
I'll just introduce myself. I'm Wes Maris. I'm the race director of the Hot Traut. Second year doing it, so. I've been involved with it since the very beginning, so eighth year doing it, so. Guys have any questions? So you can just go on the website. There's an email on there. It will come to me, so I'm, I'm usually monitoring it on a hourly, daily basis, so if you have any questions. But there was one change to the five K course. I was talking to you, Chief. That was four or five weeks ago. So, uh, we had a discrepancy on the distance on the five K last year. We were a little bit short on it, so we had a lot of runners let us know about that.
Record times.
So we had to tweak it a little bit. So it's actually gonna jog into Clearbook. So we were talking about doing that churn right in front of the, Chief, uh, into the station there. That won't go in front there anymore. It's gonna churn right on the body and then turn on the Clearbook. So that was enough to make up the distance, so.
Any questions from the board?
Thank you, very much. Best of luck here.
Thanks. I'll be down for pancakes.
Awesome. We'll look for you.
All right. Um, next item eight, eight B is discuss and consider memorandum of agreement regarding local program for operator tank system inspection and plan review. Robbie Daly is, I think, here. Robbie, yep? And you need to queue this up, Matt?
Sure. Actually, I haven't met Robbie, but I talked to Robbie on the phone and I talked to the state about the program. Correct if I'm wrong, Robbie, but you either once worked for the state doing these inspections, or currently do? And you have your own side business and work to do these inspections. I guess you could.
Yeah, I'll give a quick summary. I'm currently a State of Wisconsin employee at the Department of Air Trade Consumer Protection. We do petroleum inspect, petroleum tank inspections and we also merged probably four years back and we do weights and measures work as well. I'm transitioning into becoming an LPO, which is essentially, I'm a contracted worker for the State of Wisconsin doing just tank work. They're kind of overburdened. I think I put it on your, one of the PDFs that there's like, there's thirty-three state inspectors and there's close to a twenty thousand tanks in the state, so they're, they're overburdened. So they created this program probably way before I was here. I don't know when it was created. So July first, I'm transitioning into becoming an LPO and not a full-time employee of the state. In order to become an LPO, the state requires that I let the municipalities know and get a signed agreement so they know what's going on. Cottage Grove is sort of unique though because I am your current tank inspector with the state, so it's kind of a seamless transition. Essentially, nothing would change except for the fact that you, your businesses that have tanks that have combustible, flammable or hazardous, hazardous liquids would be inspected on an annual basis. Right now, the state has a goal of every, on an annual basis, but, um, reality, they're not done. Like right now, I'm on a twenty-month cycle and I'm considered one of the better inspectors in terms of my numbers. But it's federally mandated that they do it every thirty-six months for above-ground storage tanks, which is generally what I'll be inspecting in the municipality. There are just a quick couple of things I wanted to say that aren't very clear in the information I provided. Wisconsin inspections LLC is Robbie Daly. I don't have any employees. I don't, I'm not gonna get any employees. But for tax and insurance purposes, it's just easier to create an LLC. I'm the same inspector that's doing the inspections now. I already have good rapport with, um, all the businesses. I've inspected every tank in Cottage Grove at least once. Cottage Grove is unique in the sense that they have a large chemical plant in hydrate chemical. So according to the law, all tanks are created equal, like say a golf course that has a five-hundred gallon tank to, to, they use for their equipment. That's on the same inspection cycle as hydrate chemical. Obviously, the risks associated with those two are not equal. So I think it's a huge benefit to go to an LPO because you'll get inspection every single year. Whereas right now, hydrate's not being inspected every year. And they have over a million gallons of class one liquids that obviously you want to be inspected. Last thing, uh, with me, you'd have a little bit more access to data and information about specific sites if you wanted it. It's not in the state's policy to hand out that information just because it would bog us down even more. But I'm tech savvy and I have access to the information pretty quick and it wouldn't be hard for me to provide it if you guys wanted it. Things like what companies have deficiencies, what are those deficiencies, gives you a little bit better understanding of the risks associated with these facilities. And that's about it. If there's any questions?
Do you need to do a memorandum agreement each year or is this good for a certain year?
So it automatically renews. You only do one agreement unless there's a particular item that you would want to change. Another thing too is the memorandum of agreement that I provided is not, that's something I made. Essentially, it could be as simple as, we, the municipality, give Robbie the authorization to do these inspections. But I thought I'd give it a little more, um, contract vibe just because, so I have a contract with the State of Wisconsin. That's fifteen pages long. And what's in that agreement are just highlights of some of those things, just to give you an idea of how, um, what I'm bound by with the state. But I assure you, there's a lot more that I'm required to do that's not on there.
Lee, from your perspective, what level of memorandum understanding would be lies for us?
I can live with this. Um, it's, it's somewhat abbreviated, but, um, I think that it covers the main points. And, um, uh, since he has been doing the work, um, in the village, uh, and, you know, if you check the boxes here, I think that it's fine. Mine would be longer, but this is fine, so.
Do you have a licensing or some kind of training that you go through with the state?
Yep. Uh, so I went through an initial licensure and then I do continuing, continuing education credits through the state.
So that would, uh, so you just do continuing credits each year, is that what you're like?
Yep, yep.
And if you define deficiencies, I'm assuming then the state's notified and same kind of process occurs?
Yep, same process. So what they do is a ten-day, five-day red tag. I, my sites usually don't get to a red tag. But yeah, it's the same compliance process, yep.
And if you cite some entity, will the state do the prosecution?
If it gets that far, yes.
Yeah.
Once it gets to that level, it just gets out of my hands and they take over.
Will we need to issue any sort of permits or anything else that you want to?
No. And I have an ID, a state-issued ID that on the back of it has the Wisconsin statute that allows me to be there during these inspections.
Especially something like this, you know, the, in some ways, the less involved we get, the better. Because if there is an issue, I mean, hydrate has come up before in terms of Roll fourteen, you about this, roll fourteen about that. My position has been, well, there isn't too much that we can do and this, I think, is a such a direct link. Or we can say, well, there, we, we feel that there's an issue there. Can you check that out or, you know, you have the power of the state behind you.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, local program, uh, program operator, LPO, tank, system inspection and plan review. And that would recall it.
You can pass that. Do you need any more detail on that? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Having heard none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Motion carries. Thanks, Wes. New business, item C, discuss the procedure for public comment and Melissa provided a little background for this. I don't know, Melissa, you wanna talk about the memo, put in the packet or?
Sure. I mean, I was just, uh, if, since I know in my memo that the forms that were filled out last time, a lot of people didn't stay. And I'd love to hear from residents that did fill out the form and make sure that, um, that they were involved in this process. So I just want, thought it would be good if we discuss if that's how we want the forms used or if there's a different, um, way to go about hearing from the public. I don't know specifically. I just hope you can discuss.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Melissa, well, that we should probably discuss it because I like to hear from the public, but I also want to know. If, if, to me, at least if you're serious enough about something, you're gonna fill it out and you're gonna be here. And you're gonna, you don't have to talk, at least you're gonna be present. And it seemed like this last few times, we've been, we got inundated by a bunch of signup things and then people left. And I don't know, so it's hard for me to make a judgment on the actual situation because I don't know how serious somebody is unless, if they're being corralled as a neighborhood to do this or if it's actually something that really matters to them. It's one of two sets.
Is there a comment section on the paper now for someone that can attend, like for against?
No, just to address who they are and what item, um, agenda they're commenting about or, or giving input on.
Because I do understand that a lot of people work during meetings, like can't attend. Like it might be interesting to hear more about their concerns other than just circling.
I'm not, I understand the issue, but here's some things that I would ask you to consider. Number one is, on a fairly regular basis, we get, or you get, and then staff generally sees it, emails from, um, residents who are, you know, I can't be at the meeting, but, or this is what I want, you know, this is what I would hope to see. And so are, are you gonna treat those differently or not? And I think that, uh, you know, it's a question of how much weight you want to add to those, those comments. I mean, that has really always been the case. You could be inundated with those things and you can still say, well, okay, fine, I get this, I get that your neighborhood is against this. But, um, you know, as a trustee, I feel that I need to be voting this way or, or whatever. Sometimes the simplest changes create the most issues. And I think this is one that you could, you could certainly say on there, we encourage you to be at the meeting or whatever. But I don't know if you could really necessarily or even want to limit, um, public comment. And just you'd have to try to trust that, um, you, that these people are, like right now, you say, are you, are you from the town or the village? Well, we don't check that. I mean, as, as it is, so there's a, it, it opens up a lot of issues and it's just something I urge you to think about before we make any drastic changes.
You know, it seems like there's so many issues that nobody shows up, nobody makes any comments, and now people are showing up and making comments. And I, the read I get is we want to shut them down and not allow them to have those comments. And we're here, we're voted by the people of the village Cottage Grove. I'd love to hear what they have to say, whether they can be here or not.
I mean, I'd like to know a little bit more about what concerns a person has rather than just yes or no. I don't want to discourage people from doing that either, but to actually engage in the process. Like encourage them to engage in the process and talk about how we can move forward or what they're concerned about or what vision they see. I mean, some things are simple yes, no, but some things require some discussion, I think. So I'd be interested in hearing more about like what concerns a resident has that, you know, got them to come to.
I, I think they've got that option if they wish to speak. I think some people might be uncomfortable speaking. I can't speak to that. Some people have conflicts, like I think there's a track meet tonight for the high school. I mean, you know, I mean, just people can't be available to a meeting unfortunately.
Maybe we could add a comment section.
I would be up for that, yeah.
Do you want to add a line for a signature or something like that to authenticate the form?
Do that too. That's a good idea.
To me, what's confusing is the in favor versus the against. So the way that the agenda was written was, it could be interpreted either way. That all of those against mean that they are against having a protest petition. We don't know, right? Because they weren't here to further clarify and I'll have our circles to go on. So if there were a way to either further get clarification, this sheet seems to need to be the sheet that we use when people are at a meeting and they want to speak on an agenda item and they want to present it. So maybe it's a different type of form or paper that somebody fills out to provide general comments to the board versus using, trying to enable this form to match that. Maybe we just leave this form alone and create something else.
Lee, how is that, different forms or adding to the forms?
You know, I, I think that, um, I always try to remind the board that for the people in the audience, this may be their very first time speaking to the board. this may be their very first time speaking to the board. And it can be, although if you're used to it, you say, "Well, what's the big deal?" For many people, it is a big deal and it's kind of intimidating. And I think we just want to simplify this as much as possible. And, you know, I have no problem with using two forms. I think we just have to understand that we can't absolutely guarantee that they're giving us the correct information. And some people, you know, I'm trying to think of how many public hearings they've sat through in 40 years, and I can understand why they might not want to sit through it. And especially some of the ones recently, like Troy said, that are actually quite volatile. And some people are concerned about speaking up about that. So I think it's a good, it would be a fine idea to come up with separate forms and just understand that we can't be 100% accurate.
Or could we just use this form and just add a comment section?
Sure.
Clarity so that, I think, you're really confirming in favor versus non-favor or more detail if they want to provide it, particularly if they don't want to speak.
One of the issues of their separate forms are, if someone fills out the wrong form, what are we going to do about that?
Yep.
You know, are we not going to accept it? So probably just make the one we have more inclusive. I don't know.
That would be my preference, but.
And so I guess one other clarification is somehow, this form's not online, right, Lisa?
No.
So somehow this made it into circulation, which wasn't its original intent. The intent was it to be used when people come to the meeting.
Correct.
Right? So I think that that part can be just a little confusing too. It's already pre-filled out a little bit. I don't know. It just seems like this is welcome to tonight's meeting. And I'd like to protest this particular issue. So I.
Understand too that that form predates the internet, consider. And so at the time, you know, and again, if we put it online, then I think that that encourages people to fill it out and send it in or whatever. So I think we have to, you know, just have to decide, do we just want to make our present form a little more inclusive? I think Matt's right that, and we've certainly seen it, where people have not signed up. And if you sit through some public hearings, there are people who will refuse to sign up. "I'm American and I can speak." I think that was a word I heard. But, you know, I think that as a village board, we just want, and John, that's something that maybe you could make as part of your, when you open a hearing, is just say, you know, "We are interested in what you have to say. We, if you wish not to speak, then, you know, fill out the form, make sure we get it, and add any comments."
Can you do that?
So, sorry, one other clarifying. So are we suggesting that people be able to fill this and not be present to get further clarification? Or are we suggesting that it's okay, people come, they can totally not say that they're here?
I think you, you know, I don't see the big issue in terms of letting people fill things out. And if they, let's say that you had 30 of these things and from, that come over the internet or sent in in some fashion. Well, you could decide if you want to, how much weight you want to put on that. And then you might say to yourself, "Well, if those people aren't here, maybe they don't really care about it as much," or whatever. So I, I mean, it's just, it's an inexact science and it's just a way of trying to collect some more information. So I don't think that you ought to, personally, I would not like to see us take a position that you have to be here to fill out a form.
No, I don't think we're saying that.
Yeah, no, and I think that at least was clarifying.
Yeah.
Because it, you know, talks about being here. So I don't, maybe we could just revise this one form and still have a comment.
Have a comment section. Signature section. I like that idea of authentic.
Lisa is a magician when it comes to these kinds of forms, and so I'm sure that we could handle this.
Do we have a doctor?
I don't.
And I don't know if there would need to be, if it's going to be out kind of for circulation, if there needs to be any sort of, there's a rule, right, that things can't be left in mailboxes and things like that. I don't know. I'm just wanting to.
I'm not a fan. I'm not sure. I know that that's something I've always heard is that you can't put things in mailboxes and that, you know, stuff seems to show up all the time. And we would just encourage people to, you know, obey the law, not, you run into these issues of, "Well, they were handing them out and then they're blowing all over the places and that." You know, it's just, these are issues that we'll deal with as they happen. But I think having a form that's been modified to try and get as much public input as possible is a great first step.
Yeah, I'd like to see more, you know, more inclusive information or, you know, include more people in the process and kind of get their vision captured on a form or an email, or if they can't attend, or if they're here and wish to speak. But I think it might be nice to at least add space where they can write, yeah.
So do we need to make this, since it's not a discuss and consider, do we need to make this part of our next agenda, or can we just give direction?
I would just say, I would just direct staff to modify the form and then bring it back as an action item and get, you know, the board to decide if they want to change it at all. But I think that's probably the easiest way to do it.
Okay, all right. Any other comments, discussion, or does someone, or direct staff? So I think the general consensus, direct staff to update this form, to add a comment section, signature, if people want to sign it, that's, that's fine. Adds a little more oomph to their comments or even circling things. And then bring it back. And then perhaps even creating somewhere, it could be a PDF so it could be online, so that people could just also have their, we're already looking ways to get like Polco people to answer that more. So this would be just another avenue for citizens to provide input. Matt, anything else, or Lisa? All right. We move on to reports from village boards, commissions and committees. Public Works is the first one, and we have an update on the Main Street Bike Path by Mike and JJ. I think, right? Or just Mike? JJ is referring, deferring.
It's pretty hard. I can't see the. That's it. Good evening. When we started the project for the Main Street Bike Path, it was based on receiving a grant from Dane County Parking Ride Program. And the villages received a grant of about $182,500 for the project. And we were trying to keep the village's portion of this to the other half. As we took it through committees and, you know, reviewed some of the sidebar improvements, a recommendation from Public Works, well, the committee was to add curb and gutter to this block of between Parkview and North Lawn. And in doing that, we'll be adding storm sewer, street inlets, putting in concrete curb and gutter, removing and replacing chipped asphalt so that the curb and gutter can be installed. And then, rather than have the bike path down on a berm that's separated by a ditch from the road, we're going to be putting in, taking that berm from the top of the berm and just continuing up to the back of the bike path. And the bike path will drain towards the street like an urbanized street. So that will add fill. And so basically, the bottom line is, within that budget, we can build from just north of Oak Street to Parkview and then to North Lawn and do all those things. Even the block of North Main Street from Wealth III to Parkview, we'd be adding curb and gutter to that as well. That was something that even before going to Public Works, we were looking at concepts for how are we going to get a bike path in where the properties are much higher than the street and there's a shallow ditch next to the road? So a lot of the properties in this block actually have gates in their fences so they can walk out of the backyard and basically maintain the hillside. So what we're doing on that is we're putting a bike path in here that's had come down to a ditch and we're bringing the bike path right into their existing hillside, not making it any steeper. Then we need to be able to tie into something, and that would be new curb and gutter, which allows us to rise right up to the front of the bike path at a certain slope, put in the bike path at its maximum cross slope and then tie into the hillside. So all those things ended up being more expensive. So we went back to Dane County. We showed them some of these things, you know, minor exceptions to some of the federal rules. And they looked at it and said, "Yeah, that would be fine as long as you build what you said you were going to build as far as the dollar value. It will still cover the $182,005." So that got us to here. And then while this portion, this is kind of blown up a little bit more larger, but it is a little bit more than half of the project to get still up to the roundabout. They said, "Well, just come back next year and put in for another grant." So we looked at that and we said, "Yeah, that would, that would keep your exposure to doing all these urbanizations to under $125,000," basically, for these two blocks of roads that are being urbanized, filled, and then grass-lined ditches are being replaced with storm sewer. So we're happy to hear that. The county is actually participating in all those things in the first two blocks and at 50% level, utilizing an entire grant. So we wanted to say, these are things that we got directed by the commissions along the way that will make the roads better. It does on that east side. There is already curb and gutter. Now that developers and more modern developments put in. We would have a stretch in the second phase in front of the town properties tying back into Limestone. But we've estimated this much that's left at $250,000 with a Dane County grant, which isn't guaranteed. That would bring it down to $125,000. When I say not guaranteed, they were, they're due to finish this project so that it gets to tie, a tie to McCarthy Park, all the way back to the Glacial Trail and Trail. But we have to apply and be approved next year. So that was an update on the project, just keeping like this year's budget amount in accord.
Is there a maximum amount for the grant, or is it kind of a 50% goal?
It's a 50% goal with them. There used to be a maximum of $100,000 of this grant covered. And this year, they covered the village at $182,005. So they said, "Yeah, with the current administrator, there's not a maximum." They are trying to spread the money around now. So this year, the village took a fair amount of that budget that they had.
So initially, we thought it would cost $370,000 or $365,000 to do the full thing?
Yes.
And now it only covers two blocks?
Three.
Why is that?
3,000 feet because of the urbanizations we're doing on these two blocks.
So initially, we weren't going to urbanize? It was just going to be?
Cutting into the hillside and building on the berms, which actually, in this block, would have put the trail below the road, but.
Mike, can you just explain what the advantage of urbanization or urbanizing is? Because I had to.
Well, I mean, there's a number of them. And I mean, it's one of the few roads in the community that still kind of maintains its rural highway character. There's a bunch with pavement, number one. The edge of the pavement is constantly being lost on these roads as they undergo traffic. The asphalt is expanding and breaking off at the edges. We're losing pavement. The other one is the control of the stormwater as far as, you know, what you're doing to take away ponded areas in that area. And then finally, it's safety. So right now, the road has a three-to-one slope off the edge. And there, this won't solve that for all of N, but at least the east side will have been completed. When you put curb and gutter in, it takes, it takes, you know, increases the safety as far as cars coming off the road.
Had it been considered to put in curb and gutter initially in the preliminary part of the plan?
No, it was just really, the only focus was the connection of white trails.
So do we anticipate any other changes in the second phase of the project, or is this?
Second phase is actually designed of the same nature. There's one gap north of the healthcare clinic to Limestone. It's getting the same treatment. It's a much, it's a very shallow ditch in that location, but it has the property sitting up high. And then, you know, just a, you know, even compared to these two blocks, it's a shallower ditch. So those have been estimated and put into the project. It starts doing that.
And that's within the road right of way there?
Yes. That was the one challenge with this particular location, but it's within the road right of way. From Limestone Pass on down through the Commerce Park, it's essentially been all graded. It's flat. The easiest part of the project.
Other questions for Mike? It'd be nice when it's all done. All right. Next is Utilities Commission.
Okay. So the Utilities Commission, that on May 8, we discussed the Shady Grove Concept Plan. They had already incorporated some of the feedback from Public Works about water sewer line connections and lift station. Also talked about cross-connection inspections for larger commercial multifamily facilities to make sure our water supply is protected in the event of an emergency. So pending a positive reference check, the commission will plan to move ahead with contracting and inspection, the schedules laid out and required by DNR. Also discussed credits for water and sewer accounts in the village. So we want to establish a uniform way to handle a sewer credit when a resident discovers a leak as they just pay the water portion of that bill. So we anticipate voting on a standardized formula for that next one.
Any questions? All right. Next one is Plan Commission. Aaron, the first one, discussing considered ordinance by O5, 2019, petition for direct annexation to Nana's consent from Monona Grove School District for annexation of 41 acres from the town of Cottage Grove through the village of Cottage Grove. Aaron, you had a memo in there. If you want to comment on that.
Yeah, we recommend approval with one condition. Just ask the applicants to revise the map and legal description to include the entirety of the bus route right of way adjacent to the property. It sounds like they're working on that and all this, some of that, some of this in the state. Superintendent Olson and Jared Rose, the business director, are here if there are any questions. This was recommended for approval by the Plan Commission.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion then?
I make the motion to approve the petition.
Okay. This is first from Melissa.
With the condition?
Okay. First from Melissa. Is there a second?
I'll second with the condition.
Jeff, I think I heard.
I don't understand how to continue.
Motion, second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries.
There will be a development agreement in this report.
Yeah, that'll be related part of the second plan.
Okay, the reason, the reason I'm asking that is I, when we do this next couple, I'd like to give you a copy of the development agreement so that you get an idea. You hear us talk about this, but you, I'd like you to have an idea of all of the parts that are considered and it really involves the entire staff in putting it together. So, it's something that was the very first thing when I started out here, we needed to get a developer agreement and we have stayed pretty true to the content.
Okay, thanks Lee.
And B then for the Plan Commission is Discuss and Consider Ordinance 06-2019 regarding petition for a direct annexation by Unannas Consent from Joe Wagner via Cottage Grove Business Development LLC for annexation of approximately 66.649 acres from the town of Sun Prairie into the village of Cottage Grove.
Is there somebody from Gray Wolf here wants a comment or?
Todd Rizzo from Gray Wolf is here if there's any questions. The Cottage Grove Business Development LLC is the entity that owns the land, but it's Gray Wolf. This is the former Duchack property, north of five ray of TT. Gray Wolf has purchased that, they want to bring it into the village and then subsequently we'd like to bring it in and add it to TID 10. So, there's a little bit of a deadline related to that. So, the Plan Commission actually looked at this earlier tonight to recommend approval. When we have an annexation, we send the petition into the state and they have 20 days to send us a letter to give us their opinion on the annexation. This was the 20th day for this particular annexation, so we just got that letter today. So, that's on your table along with a brief memo, kind of recapping what they had to say. In this case, there's a map in the original staff report that shows that this annexation would create a town island with the gas station and the residence adjacent to the north of the gas station on the corner of N and TT. Because of that island, the state technically found it to be against the public interest. It doesn't necessarily mean they think it's a bad idea, it just means within the scope of what they look at when they look at the statutes, they have to say that. The state also pointed out that it was contiguous and it does provide benefits as far as kind of unifying and simplifying the boundaries up there. I also did speak to one of the town board members and they were not, they said they weren't really always our favorites or recognized that that island was there, but also recognized that they were continuing to get the tax benefits from the state of that town for a while anyway. The letter from the state is advisory, we don't have to follow that, we just have to have it and consider it. We'd recommend approval with three conditions. The letter from the state pointed out a couple of minor edits to the map and legal description. So, we'll ask the applicant to update that if they're already working on it. We'll update section two of the ordinance just to reflect the final information from the state that we got today. And then, number three, I guess, Lee is here if he has any additional thoughts on the state's recommendation relative to this, but the Plan Commission did recommend approval.
No, as I understand it, some language was put in to make me feel better, so I feel better and I, you know, we've been through this before, this would not be the first time that we've gotten a recommendation that was negative and we've still proceeded. It's also not the first time that a town island has been created and I don't think that in this case there are really any issues.
With this type of annexation, the town is very limited in how, as to whether they can challenge it or not, they can only challenge based on whether it's contiguous to the village or not, which the state said in their letter that it is. So, the town island is not something that can prompt a challenge from the town.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
We make a motion to approve the petition, the Cottage Grove Business Development with staff, the conditions and the leave fee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Item C then is Discuss and Consider Proposal from MSA Regarding Typical Bus Road Cross Sections. Mike?
One thing, I had a, kind of an update for your packets on this. This is for Bus Road and looking at Bus Road all the way from the Aston Road to someday Vilas Road and then, of course, the cop plan on Vilas Road shows a similar road that you built someday. What I had shown Public Works Committee and the Planning Commission early on was what, you know, what fits in an 80-foot and what fits in a 100-foot right-of-way. And basically, with reasonable-sized terraces, if you do have a bike path on one side, you can't, you know, you really can't, you can 80-foot right-of-way be a four-lane road if you ever need to. And so, just kind of showing that concept. They also, we talked about, you know, why put a grass median in the middle? So, why, why put a grass, a grass median in the middle of Cottage Grove Road on the west end of the village? What does that do for you? Well, one, when you, when you look at the left turns in town where it's four lane, but there are, there is no median, it's probably appropriate because it's 25 miles an hour and you can deal with that. But when you need to have independent left turn lanes, for instance, these are great, great areas to create that with at the intersections. They also kind of divide up the traffic, just feels safer because it is safe. You don't have people head-on situations in the regular driving areas, so it's the So, both groups had recommended a 100-foot property be required, you know, so as we're looking at Shady Grove, obviously, but, you know, what's south of Shady Grove? What are we going to do north of Cottage Grove Road and on Bus Road? We've got all the different annexations that have recently come up and we have on one side, the west side of Bus Road, we have town properties in that. We can shift around the town properties if we need to and have greater dedications on the east side, that's something we'll need to get back to the school district, homeworks and different people that are developing rather soon. So, I'm showing kind of like Bus Road north and south, this may have major handouts. The reason, I, sorry for showing Chili's on here.
You got us all excited, we just pointed that out.
Nothing to do with economic development or anything. The program I was using had that on there. I thought, oh, that's hungry maybe when I did this. So, and I'm just showing setbacks, properties with, you know, no setbacks, kind of, you know, more urban-y and we'll work this out with Public Works, but the good thing to know, and I'm showing a tree and I'm also showing a twiddle where you might have left turns, that comes up when we have residential properties that are currently there that need to be able to access later on the road. We may have to put some things in like that and then further down there may be a median. We'll be talking to them about, do we need to build four lanes now? What about the folks going in Shady Grove? Are they going to want on-street parking? I'm sure the answer to that would be a yes. We really don't have room for all that and parking, but do we, you know, will we in any time need to get to that kind of traffic level above 15,000 cars per day to that? This on the south lane, kind of creating a parkway, there's parkways I've, you know, been on that these handle up to, you know, and if you put left turn lanes in them and you take care of the traffic, the intersections, this is easily going to get to 15,000 cars per day. The important thing to note, and Public Works Committee indicated, let's get the real estate, let's build the outside, even if we want to make the median bigger initially, you know, we won't necessarily want a bike path and bike lanes, they've got to decide on that yet, but we'll have probably a bigger median out there within, say, Shady Grove and then, you know, possibly even north. So, I guess what I'm wanting a motion on is for looking for the right-of-way that we'd be dedicating on all properties on bus.
What's it cost to do the maintenance on a median like that on an annual basis?
I'd let him speak to the mowing issue, but from my perspective, much less than overall crack filling and maintaining the asphalt than is kind of your other option.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, like if someday it needs to be that and initially it doesn't need all this and it could be more grass, definitely asphalt, it doesn't get adequate load on it, does start to disintegrate. It does, asphalt does like to be recompacted by being driven on and then there's the maintenance costs of it too. So, I guess the thoughts from Public Works is let's get the outer curb lines we want and then, you know, and then if in 20 years it needs to be more and it's being reconstructed, it can be towards the center.
Is there a way that we can have that median so it's not a grass that you've got rock or something, decorative rock or something there? Again, creates less work for Public Works and mowing and all that stuff. Long-term, it would cost us all less.
Again, I defer to Sean and I don't know if he can rattle off off the top of his head, I would say a grass median in their mowing rotation is probably not a significant cost just because with the motors we have, it's a relatively quick pass in the grand scheme of parks or ball fields and kind of over there anyways.
Yeah. I mean, I think it looks nice with trees and stuff, I'm just trying to cut down labor hours on maintaining something like that because, you know, part of this growth is created by the school who's presumably not going to help us maintain that.
Could some kind of plant versus other things we could put in help like runoff or absorb water or have some other benefits?
We've done reverse medians where it actually goes down and is, and you see that on the highways and the streets are really big, this is smaller, but Cross Plains put those in, a few other communities put those in where the median actually takes in water, the drainage system is in the middle. So, I guess I did that on North Bird Street on our side of Sun Prairie as well. So, that is an option, then we could look at that kind of conservancy median for the stormwater.
Is that part of the decision you need tonight or tonight you just need to know that we approve 100?
100 feet and from there we'll continue to work with the community's design.
Mike, you said your recommendation, 100 feet?
So, I would make a motion to approve the 100 feet of street right of way for all of Bus Road as we are handling.
I second that.
Melissa?
Did.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Too quiet over there. Are you getting cold or something?
All right, any further discussion? Motion, second. All those in favor then?
Aye.
Anybody opposed and we abstain? Motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Aaron or Matt, anything else we have to cover for plan after tonight, everything?
I don't think so.
Okay. I didn't think so either, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Moving on then to Community Development Authority. Jeff?
Okay, we met on May 13th and did our election of officers and then we had a presentation by Peter Ochikoff. He was from part of the Dane County Community Development Block Grant. He's, he's not the director, but he is part of it. And it was regarding the Dane County Community Development Block Grant Consortium and potential for the village of Cottage Grove to join that. And we did vote that we would want to join that. There's a lot of benefits to being part of that. Is one of the big ones, if you are a resident of Cottage Grove right now, because we're one of the only, was it four? There's only four communities in the entire area or state or whatever that aren't in Dane County, I mean, that aren't part of this yet. And some of the benefits that we get from that is if we have, say, for instance, somebody that's got disabilities or somebody who is an elderly person in our community and they want to go and get a grant so they can work with somebody like Project Home, they can't get that right now without us being a member of this. So, we did vote unanimously that we'd become a member and there really is no reason not to. And then we also heard from or discussed the fact that Ellers, our financial consultants wanted to do an amendment for TID 10 to bring in the Duchack property.
Jeff, just in for members of the board, the fact that we're not a member of the consortium is more political than anything else. It's just that at the time that this was first discussed, there was someone that just said absolutely not and this has come up on a pretty regular basis.
It's too big because we, there was, you know, there was a lot of our residents could take full benefit of us being part of it, so.
Aaron might have a couple pieces of, a couple gaps to fill on as far as some other details. I know one of the big ones that we talked about was due to the village's high median income, if we aren't part of the consortium, we have to apply on our own. Where Dane County is an entitlement community, meaning they get the funds automatically and then they can disperse it per us applying to them. If we're applying on our own, we struggle with a lot of grants with the, with our high median income as a community, so that kind of leaves us ineligible ultimately to get funding. So, this is a path for us to be able to get some projects and anything else, Aaron?
So, if you choose to vote for approval tonight, you would be directing me to notify Dane County that we intend to join. At a subsequent meeting, there'll be a resolution and a cooperative agreement and that'll be what officially puts us in, so it's kind of pointing us in that direction.
Any, did you guys talk about any downside to it? I don't see any, but...
We didn't just have any downside that we talked about.
Yeah, okay.
No, it's, didn't make, even just listening to the presentation, I was trying to put my head around why we weren't part of that.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
But now we know. It's unfortunate, but. And then, just to continue with that TID 10 that we talked about, which we're going to discuss here in a few minutes, there is going to be a public hearing that we are going to do at the very next CDA meeting in June, so in relation to that, because it has to be a public hearing too.
Anything else, Aaron?
I don't think so. That's two different action items.
Yep. We'll take them up right now, I think. First one is A, Discuss and Consider the Mement, recommendations, excuse me, for the village of Cottage Grove to join the Dane County Block Grant Consortium. Is there a motion?
Village of Cottage Grove joins Dane County Block Grant Consortium.
Okay, we have a person, Sarah, is there a second?
I'll second.
Person, second. Okay, any further discussion? Having heard none, then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. And then, item B is Discuss and Consider Proposal from Ellers to provide amendment for TID 10 to the project plan against as in reference, this is the new property that Gray Wolf purchased from Duchacks to fold that in. Is there any motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we definitely provide an amendment to TID 10 that we allow Ellers to do so.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion, a second then. Any further discussion? Have you heard none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries. Next one is Deer Grove EMS Commission.
We met last Thursday, the 16th. Under the, calls are slightly down compared to last year, last month, we only missed three calls. Preliminary discussions with Stoughton Hospital is looking for someone to de-transport form from that hospital to other locations. It could be lucrative for Deer Grove EMS in that if we averaged one run a day, it would all but pay for one. would all but pay for one ambulance a year as far as maintenance and staff and all that stuff. They would have the second ambulance then utilized as a secondary, primary in district so that we still have coverage. They require to have a paramedic ambulance in a lot of the other areas around us, they're not paramedic status, so that's why they're interested. They, Stoughton Hospital at times had ambulance come from Milwaukee to do a transport. So the other part of that in theory is that we would probably likely, once we get on the cycle, probably take 60 days to collect the money, but we're, still have a better chance of getting the money than we do now on a regular run because of their calling for it. Johnson Block was unable.
Does Stoughton have its own?
They're not paramedics, but they're.
Oh, okay, I was just curious if they.
Yeah. And Johnson and Block were supposed to be there this last meeting to present to the boards and I mentioned a month before, they were unable to attend, so if we would like them to come some evening to our meeting if there are questions, they're more than happy that we can coordinate that through Chief Lang. Next meeting is on June 20th in Deerfield.
Okay. Is there anything else to add? Okay. We're good. Then moving on to reports from village officers.
Lee. I don't really have a formal report other than to make a request of the floor, and that is, if you have procedural questions or, you know, questions on the agenda or items on the agenda, would you please contact Matt so that he can direct me to look into them or not? I just want to be in a position where, especially on some of these Roberts rules things, that I have time to look them over. So if you do have any questions, feel free to let us know that you'd like to have this answer at the, at the next meeting. And Texas was great and I was glad I went and now I'm back in the saddle.
No pun intended.
No.
All right. Item B then is Discuss and Consider Nomination for Sarah for Emergency Government Committee. Troy has asked to be off that committee, so, and Sarah kindly is available that evening to join in the fun. So just looking for a motion to point Sarah to Emergency Government.
I'll make a motion to replace Troy with Sarah on Emergency Government.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Do we do that? Any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Item 11, it's a Communication and Misleading Business, Consider Approval of Vouchers, the first one. Any questions about the villagers?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve vouchers. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Item B is Core Funds. Nothing there, all right. Upcoming community events, we're starting to get into the exciting time of the year for communities, so anybody have anything? Okay. We're obviously gearing up for Fireman's Festival here, so it's exciting.
We do have somebody here?
Oh, oh, Sean.
First music in the grove is May 30th at Dudley Park. Six o'clock.
Great, thank you, Sean. You can yell at me sometime too if I don't work up. Future agenda items then, is item D.
Baker Tilly will be here to do the audit review 2018 and we could start the prioritization process.
Do we have to do any Discuss and Consider at all for this presentation we had earlier from Cheryl for Safe Communities? We partnership with them or what's involved in that?
I think we'll, for kind of action, general actions already, we have a, prefer the actions of public operations maybe.
Okay.
They're going to guarantee backup again as committee, so that'd be a good one for them to start.
As long as we're making some progress.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, they're doing a lot of good things.
Yeah, totally agree.
John, I'll have the report on the proposed ordinance changes.
When could we bring up the property tax, property assessment?
Reassessing?
Mm-hmm. Reassessing.
We can, we can put that on the board or on the agenda next time.
It doesn't have to go to a committee first, or?
No, it's at this level, I think, for that discussion.
If I could make a suggestion for going through the prioritization process, maybe wait to see where that lands on there and then go from there.
When do you want to do this, the prioritization? Want to do it the next time?
Can discuss, discuss starting it next time, yeah.
And that would be for priorities starting in now, in July or next calendar year?
No. Starting, starting now.
Now.
Okay.
One thing at the bottom of the agenda is the landfill at 6 on May 28th and joint fire at 6:30. I was going to make it as landfill at 6:30.
Oh, I didn't even notice that.
Should be.
It should be 6 and 6:30.
It should be flipped around.
Yep.
Just want to make sure I had it. Thanks.
Good catch.
And I do appreciate you putting those at the bottom.
All right. At this time then, we will go into closed session. Village of Cottage Grove Board enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parentheses one, parentheses E, delivering or negotiating public, or purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This closed session is negotiation commerce part, TID number five. It's a real couple.
Did we get a?
I'm sorry.
A motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion.
In a second?
You have a second?
I'll second.
No, sorry, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Murphy?
Aye.
Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Allen?
Aye.
Limber?
Aye.
Valencia?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye. Very cool session.